All right, it's six o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order. Please rise and for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. When you're ready, because we have roll call, please.
Steve Clemmons.
Here.
Gary Lillard.
Here.
John Bozard.
Here.
David Glave.
Here.
Nicole Howard.
Here.
Mary Ann Meesner.
Here.
Justin Rock.
Here.
All right, I hope everyone has the revised agenda. Dave Glave asked to pull the third item in the consent agenda, and we'll be discussing it as item 7D.
It's already been revised.
Yes.
And it's already moved to 70.
Yes. So, other than that, I don't think there's any changes. We have a consent agenda, which includes approval of the regular session minutes and authorizing the city manager to sign a lease agreement renewal with Sacanix parking lot. If you want to pull any of those, say so, otherwise I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That one passed. Time for public comments. Anybody wish to make comments to the council on non-agenda-related items? Welcome to the podium, and I just need your name, but you'll need to fill out the form there. I often wondered, Brett, if you shot a picture straight into the monitor, would you get like infinite images? It would not be good, would it? You used to do that with mirrors. Anybody else do that with you? Sorry, go ahead.
You're okay. I'm Dusty Allam. I'm the La Grande Firefighters Local 924 President of the Union, and I have a letter to read to you guys. Last month, the La Grande Firefighters Local 924 sent you a letter asking you to reconsider the use of the ARPA funds. We asked you to allocate 5% for a brush truck. Our department worked all through COVID, had to deal with constant changes in how we were able to provide care, and then ultimately were threatened with the possibility of losing our jobs. We felt this was a very small ask of the funds that came to the city due to COVID, but unfortunately, we were unable to change our minds. We have never been a group to make a lot of noise advocating for ourselves with the city council, but we are no longer able to do that. Other than purchasing of new ambulances, the fire department has not purchased a brand-new fire apparatus without a grant for the last 30 years. We have been very lucky receiving grants in the past, but without these grants, we would be responding to fires in a fire engine from 1985. We also attempted to get a grant for the new brush truck, but we're unsuccessful with the grant request. Our department has done a lot with limited resources to ensure we provide the best services possible and have sought alternative funding sources for tools we need to help provide these services. To give you a little history, in 2003, the first full year, the fire department provided the ambulance service, we ran 1,830 calls with a staffing model of five people per shift. Our department is currently fully staffed with the same staffing model of five people per shift. However, last year, we ran 3,281 calls, and as of this morning, we have ran 2,755 calls, which is around nine calls a day. If we continue at the current rate, we'll once again hit 3,300 calls. We have applied for a safer grant to try and add one person per shift, but as of today, we have not been awarded this grant. We're not here to whine that we need more personnel, but to inform you that we need to invest in our current personnel to help retain them and work on a plan to increase our staffing, whether or not we get the safer grant. There is currently a nationwide shortage for firefighters, EMTs, and paramedics. The local firefighters union and the city work together to come up with a long-term plan to help fill paramedic vacancies, but that plan won't come to fruition for three years. In the meantime, if we have a paramedic leave, we don't know if we will be able to fill that position with a paramedic. This could increase the workload on the paramedics that still work at the department as well as other members. We're competing with other local fire departments like Pendleton and Umatilla County Fire District One that pay significantly more than we do and offer other benefits that we do not. We don't expect our small department to be able to compete against large city fire departments, but we do need to do something to be more competitive with other local fire departments to be able to retain the staff we currently have. As with all people, we know how important roads are, especially since our sick and injured patients are being bounced around in the back of an ambulance, but our fire department needs to be a high priority for the city. If we aren't proactive in addressing the needs of the fire department while we are fully staffed, we could end up short-staffing and not be able to get back to full staffing. I'm here to ask the current council and future council to take a long, hard look at our department and what services we provide and give us the tools that we need to provide them.
Any questions for Dusty before he steps in? Could you leave a copy of that with us, please?
Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dusty, I want to thank you for that. I don't think we've ever had anybody from the fire union firefighter come and talk to us like that. It's good to know from you what it is that you think you need. I'm not going to be on this council in January. I'd like to hope that the next council will take it up under consideration during their council retreat to look at what the long-term needs are for the fire department. I've heard some of those concerns before in terms of comparability, and that's usually during when we're doing contract negotiations. It would be good to have that kind of information, plus the number of calls that you're doing through the ambulance. That's the one that's really killing us, it seems like, but again, I don't know. Anyway, thank you for bringing that to us. Anyone else like to speak to the council on non-agenda items? All right, we're going to move into public hearings. Give me a second to find my location. All right. This is a public hearing to consider an appeal of the planning commission decision, conditional use file number 01 PCA22 and 11-CUP22. We need to be very careful with these kinds of hearings. I'm going to preface this before I open it. The council is now removing its normal sort of, in some ways, objective or subjective hats, and we need to put on an objective hat. That's the bailiwick of any kind of land use decision. So, we need to be as objective as possible on these kinds of decisions. With that, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask for a reading of the rules of order in their entire team.
The city council will conduct one quasi-judicial public hearing. These rules of order are applicable to the public hearing to consider an appeal of a planning commission decision, file number 01PCA22, applicant Rose. The hearing will proceed as follows. The mayor will request the staff report, which includes applicable criteria and standards for the issues under consideration in the application. Subsequent to opening the public hearing, the mayor will accept testimony relating to the application. The mayor may state a time limit for testimony. All testimony must be directed toward the applicable criteria. Oregon land use law requires that all issues raised by a participant during the hearing must be sufficiently clear and specific to allow the hearing body and other parties an opportunity to respond to those issues. Failure to raise the issues during the hearing may invalidate future appeal. The proceedings are being electronically recorded to be transcribed into written minutes. When testifying, please step to the podium and state your name. Before leaving the podium, please complete the speaker sign-in sheet. The applicant will be invited to speak first, followed by proponents, then by opponents, and then by any parties neutral to the application. An opportunity will be provided to parties to clarify any issues raised or to rebut testimony. Proponents then opponents will be provided an opportunity to clarify any issues or to rebut testimony. If additional documents or new evidence is introduced during the hearing, any participant may request a continuation of the hearing. Any participant may request that the hearing record be kept open for seven days to submit additional written evidence or testimony for the purpose of responding to new evidence. Unless waived, the applicant has seven days to submit a written response. Members of the city council may ask questions of the staff or hearing participants at any time. The mayor may then close the hearing or continue the hearing at a specified time and place. All decisions must be based on findings of fact from the staff report or evidence and testimony received which relate to the criteria of the land use decision. An appeal of the city council decision must be made in writing to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals, together with the required fee, within 21 days from the date that the final decision is mailed to the applicant and interested participants. A counselor must declare any ex parte or pre-hearing contact, including the person's name and the nature of the discussion, as well as any site visitations to the area in question. Counselor should declare any personal or financial interests in this matter and may disqualify themselves from participation in the hearing. Does any counselor wish to make a declaration?
I did drive by the establishment and look at it.
So did I, but I live that part of town, and that's a pretty busy. Y is very busy.
Well, I went directly there. I mean, I go visit it.
Does anyone in the audience wish to challenge the right of any counselor to hear this matter? Hearing now, let the record show that there are no challenges.
All right, we've had a reading of the rules. It's Mike Oakwood's show.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So, I've kind of written out a presentation. This is a huge packet, so I've kind of written out my notes, and I'm going to kind of read off of those, so hopefully I don't bore you too much with the reading element of it, but then after we kind of go through this, if you want to go through individual elements of the staff report and draft decision order, we can do that. But, so just to give you some background, in July of last year, 2021, the property owner came to the city and the planning commission approved a conditional use permit for a one-bedroom bed and breakfast in, a short-term rental on this property using the main house. And this request that is under appeal tonight was a request that was submitted in August but considered in September by the planning commission, essentially two months ago, to expand that application or that original conditional use permit to have a second bed and breakfast on this property, which would be within an accessory dwelling. The garage on the property would be in the back in the upper floor of the garage. The planning commission denied this request predominantly based on criteria C of the Land Development Code review criteria, identifying that this application would have significant adverse effects on the adjacent property as well as to the neighborhood. And for this appeal, this is what's considered a de novo hearing, which essentially is a do-over. So, that's what the Land Development Code identifies this, so it's a full public hearing. You have the ability to review all of the evidence and testimony, and you could develop a different decision than the planning commission. But customarily, what appeals look at is you look at the planning commission decision, and the appellant has the burden of proof to identify where did the planning commission error in their decision? And is their decision justified? And then if you agree or disagree with that, then you would either uphold or overturn the planning commission decision, or you can modify it if you feel conditions need to be imposed or something else.
Mike, a de novo hearing can include new evidence, is that correct?
You're correct, it can. And so, for a conditional use permit, there's three review criteria that the decision is entirely based on, in addition to just some of our basic land development code items like parking. And the planning commission has already identified through some plan revisions that the applicant submitted that all of their parking requirements and all of the city code requirements for operating bed and breakfasts or short-term rentals met, but the criteria has not been met. This criteria is on page 12 of your draft decision order, so if you wanted to kind of look and see what those are as I kind of go through this, there's three of them. It's an A, B, and C. The first two are not being challenged. Those are kind of gimmies, for the most part, for most conditional use permits. The first one is that the use is listed in our code as something that's permitted as a conditional use, so that somebody even has the ability to apply for it. That's met. The second one deals with transportation and public services and those sorts of things, and I don't know if we've ever encountered a scenario where a property did not have adequate services to support an application, but the first two have been satisfied. And so, the third criteria is the focus of the planning commission's decision, and it's the focus of this appeal. And this has two parts in this criteria. The first part deals with the characteristics of the development compatibility and specifically says will not have significant adverse effects on abutting properties. And then the second part is will not have significant adverse effects on the surrounding neighborhood. So, those are your two elements in this review criteria that you're asked to consider tonight. So, as the planning commission looked at this application, they found that this request results in significant adverse effects on both the abutting property and the surrounding neighborhood. So, for that, for the first criteria you'll see in your staff report, under the findings for criteria C, the effects on the adjacent property in the area, there's only one adjacent property next to this particular property. This is a corner lot that has one property next to it. All of the other properties are directly across Public Street right-of-way's or alleys and are buffered by other conditions. And so, there's only one adjacent property that, in this case, that you would be evaluating, is there a significant adverse effect? And that particular property owner has submitted a letter to the planning commission. It's a two-page letter that's included in your packet, as well as they attended the planning commission meeting and voiced their concerns or objections, and those concerns predominantly focused on parking issues that they currently experience with the B&amp;B next to them, privacy impacts that they're experiencing that they're concerned will increase, as well as safety issues for himself and his grandchildren that he cares about at the property. And then other issues just has to, the change in the residential character and the quality of his neighborhood with the change of, or with the addition of, you know, commercial uses or commercial activities in the neighborhood as you're converting homes to a lodging use. And so, the planning commission, you know, found that those arguments were valid and agreed with that testimony, and found that that particular element of the criteria was not met because this applicant would experience significant adverse impacts as a result of this B&amp;B. There's a B&amp;B located directly across the street from, across Y Avenue from this property and the neighbor's property. This property has a B&amp;B, and so this accessory dwelling unit would result in a third B&amp;B that would be immediately adjacent to this property or in the vicinity of this property, generating adverse impacts. And so, the planning commission found that that is significant, and this criteria is not met. The second half of that deals with effects on the neighborhood. A lot of that is a little bit more subjective, because you're looking at, how does it change the residential character of a neighborhood by adding these commercial influences? And there's a lot of articles that the planning commission has been looking at. There's a lot of testimony that where you're just seeing that the quality of a neighborhood is deteriorating as you start losing residents living in those areas, and you have, I don't know if you want to call them transients, but you have just overnight folks there, and you don't have an actual property owner living there that you can rely on or associate with. And there's other impacts that some communities have that we haven't experienced yet as well that are areas of concern. But, so in addition to the testimony that was received relating to that, the planning commission also is looking at, that you'll see in your packet, there are four B&amp;Bs within a one-block radius of this general vicinity, and one of those on Z Avenue came to the planning commission in January with almost the exact same request to expand their two-bedroom B&amp;B in their house to their accessory dwelling, which is an upper-floor apartment. And that application was denied for, in January, for the exact same impacts that this applicant is experiencing. And in that case, we had three or four property owners come to the planning commission meeting with concerns about parking and the change of character of their neighborhood, privacy issues, and impacts to their alley and maintenance. There's a whole number of issues. And, anyway, so that partially influenced the planning commission's decision on how the character of this area is changing by having a fourth bed and breakfast added.
Back you up, you just said that January, beginning of this year.
Correct.
You had a similar application.
Which was denied.
Which was denied.
On the same.
But more neighbors objected to it.
Yes. Yes, and then you'll see in the appellant's submittal, there is some public testimony in support of their request, and a couple of those property owners came in. None of them are immediately adjacent to this property. Some of them are across the street. One of them is across the street. The other one that is immediately adjacent is buffered by, is across an alley, and is buffered by an accessory building, and is indirectly impacted, if impacted at all.
Mike, you talk about the neighborhood, and all these people are in that neighborhood, though. So, it adversely or doesn't adversely affect the neighborhood, is what you've been saying all along, so.
Yeah, I think that that's something for you to consider, is how do you look at a petition, and what information are you handed when somebody knocks on your door to ask you to sign a petition? And we don't know what questions were asked and what compelled somebody to sign a petition, but the fact that they didn't send a letter and show up at the meeting, I don't know. That petition carries a little bit less weight than a property owner, a resident, that actually shows up at the meeting or submits a letter that expresses their concern rather than a generic signature of, "I have no objection."
So, all the people, excuse me, all the people that testified in favor of this permit, which are listed on page 13, one, two, three, three people, looks like it could be more. One of them was four letters from people. The other one looks like they might have been there.
Yeah.
They were there or showed up some type of active engagement.
Yeah, and none of them, except for one, lived next to a B&amp;B in the neighborhood and are directly impacted, and that has an influence on the decision. It's nice to have that support, and I think that support is important, but when you don't get any support from a property owner, or you don't hear from a property owner that's truly experiencing impacts, how do you weigh that support? This is somebody that is not impacted and generally feels that they support, you know, B&amp;Bs in the neighborhood. Many of us do. Many of us see the benefit of B&amp;Bs in our community, but if you don't live next to one, what is, how do you weigh that support? And so, anyway, so that's the dilemma the planning commission had, is how do you weigh that support when you see a petition or you see signatures from folks that are not impacted?
Nicole?
Well, I don't know where I'm going to fall here, but I just think I want to be cautious about assigning legitimacy or some scale of legitimacy to one's level of engagement in the civic process. Like, if you sign a petition and you're in your kitchen, that's okay, but if you sign the petition and you visit the property, then you get like three points, and if you, I don't think that is feasible or logical. I think you could, eyes wide open, understand what's being asked when you sign this, and they do live in the neighborhood, and we're being asked about the neighborhood, so I think it has some, you know, credibility. It has some value.
Right, and it does have value, and it wasn't discounted. It was considered.
Sounds like it was relegated because they weren't here in person, and I would just hate to put that burden on the citizen.
That may just be my interpretation of it, so that, but either way, there's two criteria that have to be met in order to approve the application in that criteria C. One is that there's no significant impacts on the neighbor, and there's no significant impacts on the neighborhood, and the planning commission found that both of those are, there are significant impacts, and that criteria is not met.
Okay, so Mike, the key phrase of what you just said was, and I'm reading this off of page 12, significant adverse effect. And to me, this is where we walk into the subjective area, because unless I have some measure of what significant adverse effect is, I mean, I don't have a scale for that. I don't have a number for that. You know, it could be different. It could be different for the person who lives next door than the person that lives across the street. So, it gets to be very subjective for me, so help me understand this thing, because, or is that part of the dilemma of land use planning?
That is part of the dilemma, and that is part of the job that you have in making the decision, is you have to determine whether that's a significant adverse impact or not. And you have to weigh that with the testimony that you hear and the evidence that you're presented with.
And the planning commission did list what they felt were adverse impacts.
That's correct, and that is in your decision order, and that is what their decision is based on. And this was a public hearing that took about an hour and a half, and so it was not something that they did not spend time on. They spent a lot of time discussing this and trying to figure out, how do you grapple with that issue? Is there a way to meet in the middle? And they were not able to arrive at a favorable outcome, because there's a significant adverse impact, and they were not able to alleviate that.
Go ahead, Mary Ann.
Mike, and when did the planning commission meet again?
That was in September.
Oh, September, so it was before everything came out to the council about looking at the ban on.
The moratorium.
On the moratorium.
Yeah, and this application, by the way, would not be subject to the moratorium.
Yeah, I know it wouldn't, but that influence of what we have decided with the moratorium could influence the planning commission, but they met before that came out, is that correct?
They did, but the moratorium, even today, this applicant could still apply for B&amp;B today, so this would not have an influence on their decision.
I know that, but I meant in our thinking.
Okay.
That's all I meant, is we have changed a little bit in our philosophy since we approved the moratorium, but this happened prior to us approving it and before it came to the council.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I think there's a disconnect here. This application could be submitted next week, and it would be handed by the planning commission. I just want to make sure that we're.
Yes, I do understand that.
Okay.
Yes, I just meant.
I think, Mary Ann, your point is we've had a frame of mind change or a little different perspective since maybe that thing was applied for.
But I don't think a change in posture influences.
It shouldn't.
No, it shouldn't.
To me, it's not germane to how we interpret.
No, it isn't, but I just wanted to make sure that it happens prior to that, to even from the planning. I mean, I know it doesn't change our position.
It doesn't change theirs either.
I hope not.
I think that's what everybody's saying.
So, Mike, and just to clarify, and again, I got to put it out on the table the way, and correct me if I'm wrong. If three criteria, two of them have been satisfied. The third one has two parts. Adverse effect on abutting properties, adverse effect on the neighborhood. We can agree that, based on the amount of support from neighboring properties, not abutting properties, that that element of the condition is relatively satisfying. The one that we're basing our decision on is the abutting property has significant and significant adverse effects. Is that correct?
I would say that is not correct, because the planning commission, I mean, you're correct on the second half, but the planning commission's conclusion is that it also has a significant adverse effect on the neighborhood, as this neighborhood is converting into more of a commercial environment with more.
But I don't necessarily agree with that piece of it, because.
That's for you guys to discuss in your deliberation. That's not something that's been decided.
You know, as I'm looking at this, I can't count this off the top. It has been four, eight, another eight, 16, looks like another seven, 23, so maybe 33 properties in the two-block area, and 33, three of them right now are Airbnb or short-term rentals, so that's 10%.
I think before you draw the conclusion that it's not a big deal, I think you need to hear testimony from, you know, the citizens that are here. you need to hear testimony from, you know, the citizens that are here because the ones that live next to those feel differently than you.
I, I understand that.
So I, I think that that's not a conclusion that's decided yet.
Okay. So, so I, I need some, before we do that, Mike, I do need to remind council that Mr. Riley has spoken to us before, I believe, during a council meeting on this issue. He, I also have had at least two emails from, from Mr. Riley. Does, does that affect my ability to sit here and make a decision?
So just to clarify.
I should have made that statement at the beginning.
No, no, I understand. Just the, the emails that you received and the contact you have, were those specific to this application or were those just the issue of, of B and Bs generically?
I don't know that it was this specific application, but Mr. Riley did raise concerns about having the short-term rental next door to him. I don't, I don't, I could go back and look at the emails, but I don't recall there any reference to this particular application.
And were those, when was the planning commission decision, Mike?
That was in the middle of September.
Were those emails prior to the middle of September?
I, I don't recall, but for November, I'd have to go back and look at the dates on them. And I could do that. I have my phone.
Okay. So from a procedural standpoint, the opportunity for declarations and challenges has kind of passed. But if you do not feel comfortable being objective on this, then my advice would be to turn the meeting over to the mayor pro tem and for you to stop discussing and deliberating the matter if you feel that.
Well, you know how hard that is for me?
I do. If you feel that you cannot be objective because of those discussions, and I think also, I think in fairness to the process, having now disclosed that, I think it would be appropriate to, to see if there's anyone in the audience that would object to you continuing.
Well, I'm gonna, I, I'm, I'm just gonna make it easy. I mean, as much as I want to be involved with this, I, I feel some, some sympathy for Mr. Riley and I've expressed that in emails with him.
Okay, Mayor, I would.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn it over. I'm gonna step out of this conversation and turn it over to Councilor Lilly.
Thank you.
Okay. I think what I will do, Mike, are you done with your report?
Yes, I am. So unless you have any questions of me related to the staff report itself.
Questions for Mike? Okay, if not, is there, yes. Well, I was thinking in terms of questions from the council for Mr. Boekwijk. It's all right.
Yeah, I just have, so are we going to talk about the parking issue? Because that was in here too a lot.
Right. So, so that was an issue that was resolved. So early on in the application, when the applicant first submitted the application, there was a proposed parking space that is roughly 10 feet deep reflected in the application. That space does not meet the dimensional requirements of city code, nor was the access into that parking space a function, to have the functional turn radius and to be able to physically get into that space. And so the applicant revised their application to create a new parking space that comes off of Y Avenue in order to create that second parking space that's required for the B and B, meeting city requirements. And so that is, the planning commission found that that was, that standard was met. So that is not being challenged.
Okay.
Mike, I have a question for either you or the city manager to answer in terms of some clarification before I proceed. When I ask for testimony in favor of the motion, I would be in favor of denying the appeal. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. So in that instance, I would ask for anybody who wishes to testify in favor of the motion, that is, they are in favor of the denial. Please step forward, provide your name and make your statement to the council, please.
I'm Bill Riley on the 1506 Y Avenue.
Legrand, I am the adjacent property. Airbnbs are convinced that they deserve special treatment. They have no burden to show that they will do good, nor that they will not do bad. The burden is solely on the resident to provide, provide denial reasons that are good enough. My reasons have been deemed by the Airbnb lawyer as not good enough. I ask you, as I go here for the next few minutes, to think about if there's any reason that you could think of that would be good enough to deny this kind of an application, if it was you sitting here instead of me. Because if there isn't, then we should stop pretending here and just surrender the city over to Airbnb. I bring you three more reasons to deny this third Airbnb motel application. As this and other cities are moving toward finding ways to spread these out, accepting this would grandfather in a permanent concentration of these things. Two of these unsupervised motels around me, just as the city's applying some thought and common sense to this, means it's already too late for me, but this doubles the number of strangers rotating through every day next door. Please deny it to say that these two on one small city lot and surrounding one person with three of them is too extreme. Now, planning commissioners say that they continue to approve Airbnb applications because nobody ever appears in opposition, opposition to them. I could be one of the few people in Legrand who's ever said no to one of these things. For saying I didn't find out that the application had been submitted until after I received the postcard in the mail from the city, I was called a liar. When I said that I had never, still haven't, been spoken to by Kimberly Rose about the application, contrary to what the letter in front of you says from her, and was never spoken to at all until after the application was submitted, I was again called a liar, even though the, the truth of it is on the date stamp at the application and city planning. In the September planning commission meeting, Kimberly Rose's son Dustin said, quote, "Bill Riley is a filthy liar." I'm the only one impacted by this, not any of the petition signers recruited from far and wide. I don't know exactly what Kimberly Rose or maybe Dustin said about me to the people right around me from whom they collected support. On the flip side of your handout is a letter from the operators of the first Airbnb with more accusations and bad mouthing. What was a short time ago a peaceful place to live is now fractured by conflict. The second reason to deny is that your approval is a statement that you give this ugliness your blessing. Don't throw away even a bit of the moral authority with which we entrust you as elected leaders on something that offers nothing to the city. If the intent here has been to pile up pressure on me that I will back off, it has worked. After three months, I'm worn down and stressed out, which for me is risky. I'm now in my 73rd year and have had three surgeries in the past five years. A few years back, cancer was removed along with some body parts, and I will be checked for three more years to see if cancer is back.
Mr. Riley, I hate to interrupt you, but we did have a three-minute limit, which has now come to its point. If you can kind of quickly wrap it up, please.
Okay. So stress is a risk factor, man. I can't, I can't deal with this kind of stress that's pushed at me. But here's the real thing I want you to hear. Have you ever cared for and had responsibility for little children who you loved? Do you recall that panicky feeling that when you're in a big crowded city or an airport, that if you make a mistake, you get distracted? You look away a little too long. When you look back, she may be gone and no matter what you do, you'll never see her again. So you hold that child close and you say, don't let go of my hand, because you're surrounded by strangers just on their way from one place to another, but none who care? That's how I feel all the time now. Each day strangers will be across the way, up front and out back. You know the relief you feel when you finally get that child home where it's safe, or if there's danger, you at least know what it is? When I'm home, I'm still at the airport. I can't identify any hazard or even if any exists. I only know that there'll be different strangers around. I have no idea how to keep my little girls safe. To teach them to be afraid of right next door, don't talk to those people, stay away from over there, is bad enough. But how long do I let them out of my sight before I need to worry I'll never see them again? The stress of this alone is risky enough for me, but it's doubled by the additional worry of knowing that it could bring the cancer back. One more thing I want to tell you before I go.
Okay, quickly.
Every day, twice a day, little kids from the Greenwood school pass by the windows and the deck on this Airbnb, close enough for unsupervised strangers to recognize their faces. All right?
Thanks, Mr. Riley. I need to.
Okay.
Thank you very much, though, for your testimony. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Is there anybody else that would care to testify in favor of a denial of the appeal?
And just as a point of order, we're going to go ahead and extend the time to four minutes so that there's equal time for each individual to speak.
Anybody else? Is there anybody who would be interested in testifying against or opposed to, in other words, they favor us overturning the appeal? If so, please step forward to the podium. There's a form for you to fill out. We just need your first name is all and you will have an additional minute.
My name's Robin. I live right across Greenwood from this property. And the point I kind of want to make is that there are a lot of rentals in our neighborhood and anybody can move into any one of those at any time. And there have been people that I've told my kids and grandkids, maybe we shouldn't go over there. That guy's worrisome, but I can't do anything about that. And he's there for who knows how long. And these people just won't be there. I mean, in and out probably. But I haven't noticed any real change in our neighborhood because of that, except for that, that place is, that's their income. They take good care of it. They really do. And I appreciate it. And that's, I mean, it's, I think that it's a good thing for our neighborhood that keeps them, I mean, some of the people don't even pick a weed all year. And that one looks like it should be on a postcard. Looks better than mine. So that's, that's, I, I have little grandkids and nieces and nephews that come and play, and I haven't noticed a change, like bad in the neighborhood, except that, that, I heard about the parking, but I haven't even noticed that. But I have my own parking office street because I've lived there for 20 years. It's, it, I think our neighborhood has, that, maybe that's what has made it a nicer little neighborhood lately. I mean, this year it seemed like, it was like people were actually, I mean, not, I mean, it doesn't look junky as much because they keep track of those because that, who would rent one of these if it looked like a shack on the sidewalk, you know? And that, that's my point of saying. I think that the property value probably looks better by curve appeal and that. And we've had some people live in the neighborhood before and rented houses that, and, and they're on a lease and they have, you know, until they, their, their people don't come and check on their properties the way these guys do, you know? That's their, that's their bread and butter and they take care of it. They don't want anybody to tear it up or, and, and I do know that some of the people that stay there are like the nurses and stuff that, that live here, that don't live here that work at the hospital and stuff. I mean, they're, they're good members of the community, you know? So just got a little bit on the other side of the fence, you know? I don't, I mean, I don't right, sit next to them, but I'm pretty close, just right across Greenwood there. My bedroom is right on that side, you know? And I don't know, that's, it's, I don't see an adverse effect to the neighborhood.
Okay. Any questions for Robin from councilors? I guess not. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak opposed? If not, I'll wait for Robin to get finished. We have these forms up there. I will be asking for anybody that cares to provide testimony that's neutral. If there's anybody that would like to do so, we have a free podium.
Hi, I'm Roxy Ogilvy. Full disclosure, I am a member of the planning commission. However, I was absent during this decision, so I really have no feelings either way because I haven't reviewed anything. I'm speaking as someone that received one of these postcards. And I live right across the street from an Airbnb, a proposed Airbnb. And as I got to reading.
So Roxy, can I clarify something for just a moment there?
Sure.
You, you received a card that wasn't pertaining to this particular issue?
No, 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 no. This was the card that would be sent out to anyone in the neighborhood with a proposed Airbnb. It's sent out 100 feet from the residence. So I thought, well, heck, it doesn't matter to me. I live across the street. And I reread it before I threw it away. And it said that if you want to review the entire application, you could go to the city and review it. And so I did that. And as I read the entire application with, dealt with the rules, pets, the intentions, the parking, all the nuts and bolts, I got to thinking about my neighbors. And I thought, how many of those neighbors actually went and got an application and know what that postcard even entailed? And I was shocked that none of the abutting neighbors had even noticed that, nor had seen the entire application. And I said, well, I'm across the street, but you're fence line of butts. So once they found that out, I urged them to go to the city and get a copy of the application. This is where I'm going with that. When you look at a petition, and it's not a petition that stipulates that they receive a copy and review a copy of a complete application, then you're relying on the petition person getter who is approaching these people to relay information. So we really don't know how much of the details or nuts and bolts these people are getting. My first inclination was to say, I don't care what they do. I, you know, I have off-street parking. And then I gave it some thought and I looked at the application and I looked at the fact that dogs were allowed and I looked at all the other possible implications. And I thought, man, this, this isn't what I thought it was at all. So in making your decision, I would urge you that unless you know for sure and for certain that those people had had a full application in front of them and knew exactly what they were signing, that you view that as subjective. Because we don't know. We don't know what they knew, how it was presented. All we know is we have a name on a petition.
One question I might have you, Roxy. A lot of the people that signed this petition in favor of it, there are other B and Bs or short-term rentals right in the neighborhood now. So over a matter of time, wouldn't they understand what adverse, if any, impacts it would have had on the neighborhood? So when you say subjective, I mean, you're questioning these people that live there and have gone through this, and they're the ones that should know whether it's bothering their neighborhood or not.
Well, I'm not questioning what they have said. What I'm.
No, but you're questioning their, what they believe, what they've seen, what they've already experienced.
From other B and Bs.
That are in the neighborhood now.
And are in the neighborhood. But that raises another concern is even, even as we approve things, we have to keep in mind that this permit travels with the property. So whoever submitted that application and whoever is now the legal landholder really has nothing back to the original application. So at this point in time, Councilor Bozarth, it could be a very nice situation, but it could change hands and become something that isn't as it was perceived. So I'm just, food for thought, councilors, food for thought. There's a lot of unknowns. The other thing is, as an abutting neighbor.
You still have a minute.
Okay. As an abutting neighbor to some people that are really not.
Oh, you already had, that was the four-minute one.
The abutting neighbor, no.
So we have someone online that is participating that we're going to bring in and we're going to speak in support of you uphold or deny overturning the decision.
They were overturning, okay.
Can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, very good. Yes, my name is Dustin Rose. I am the, the son of Kimberly Rose. So kind of caught me off guard. All right. So let's address first the petition. All right, so let's address first the petition. That I single-handedly did reach out to our neighbors as much as I possibly could, you know, for a good 10 or 12 hours, asking, this is how I asked them specifically. I asked them if, I wanted to let them know, first of all, that we are conducting a vacation rental, and we have submitted an application. And I asked them what their thoughts might have been about that and if they had any concerns. And then I asked them if, after listening to their concerns, and trust me, some people love to talk. I asked them if they had any concerns and then if they would be willing to support us in this petition. There were exactly two people who refused to sign my petition. That was Chief Bell, for obvious reasons, and a guy in a drug house, a very well-known drug house. I found out about that later, a block and a half away from us. This is our neighborhood. We have a drug house a block and a half away, and we want to protect our property and our neighbors as much as we possibly can. So that's, that's how I addressed the petition. Let's, it's, I think it's very important for me to address how I attempted to address Bill's concerns as, as much as I possibly can. And with that said, I, I'll never fully know why it ended up this way. But I, I think, I think it's to make an example out of us, and I, I really don't like that. I find that to be a pretty mean thing to do. I, I first came to, and I have all the proof. I have it over text, written messages and phone messages, if you wanted to see it. We absolutely, I, I single-handedly went over to Bill ahead of time before submitting an application to build a second bedroom for our current property. I sat down with him on his back porch for over an hour and a half. And I asked him about everything I possibly could. And I also talked to Mike about this ahead of time before I talked to Bill. Because Bill was probably the, we were more concerned about any of Bill's concerns than we were with other neighbors, even though we did talk to, to the surrounding community. And by the way, look at the, the full support that we, we thought we had. We thought we had full support of every single person when we first submitted this application until three weeks after I submitted the, the original application. So we sat, I sat down with him on his porch for an hour and a half, and he talked to me about legacy businesses and, and, you know, we'll see what happens, you know, with our property and his, what he was, the Airbnb that's directly in front of his house on, on Y Avenue. And he, he didn't have any concerns. He did, he expressed absolutely no concerns to me whatsoever. And that's just a fact. It's just a fact. And again, like I said, I mean, if you want, I can show you the text messages and how concerned we were. So we submitted the application without thinking that there were any issues with any one of our neighbors whatsoever. So three weeks later, Bill submitted a letter that was the exact opposite of his feelings that he expressed towards me. And so, you know, here we are. So, yeah, let's see here, four minutes, huh? So.
Yeah, you're, you're down to your last minute, I think.
Okay, very good. But that's the most important thing. And my mother will follow up here best she can, and she will. But yeah, yeah, we were very, I was very, very concerned with Bill and every other one of our neighbors. It is a, a second bedroom, so I have a place to live when I am taking care of my family as I travel back and forth. And I do, all the time. I have been Bill's neighbor for, gosh, over four years now. And when my grandmother was living there, I would stay in.
There we go.
In the shop, yes, sir. And, and I would take care of my grandmother in the house. And so now we have the.
We're up to our, we're up to our limit, Dustin.
Okay.
We hit the four-minute mark.
Thank you for your time. Of course.
You bet. Robert, do we have anybody else online? Okay, very good. Mr. Riley, the rules do allow for some rebuttal.
I think, I don't think we're done yet with the people speaking.
Oh, okay, I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't see you. Go ahead, please, please come up. Yeah, all right.
Okay. I get a little nervous, so forgive me here. My name is Kimberly Rose. I have owned 1502 Y Avenue since 2005. I chose to do a short-term rental because the Oregon laws restrict what property owners can do to evict long-term renters. Short-term guests can be immediately escorted off the property by the police if they are not following the house rules. I verified that with Chief Bell. I am only accepting five-star guests. It will keep my property safe and well taken care of, and it will respect my neighbors and keep them safe. Across the alley from my garage, the house has been a long-term rental for years. The last lady that rented it had five kids, several cats and dogs, and did approximately $50,000 worth of damage. The house had to be gutted to repair it. The landlord could not get her out because of the Oregon laws. I've had my son Dustin do all the legwork for getting the garage application done. He did talk to Bill beforehand, and Bill did not have any issues with it at the time. Later, Bill felt we had lied to him about the application when it was submitted. We talked to Bill before, beforehand of our intentions, even if his memory is wrong on his timeline. It's not a requirement that we talk to our neighbors, but we felt it was the right thing to do. The work has been done to meet the requirements to approve the garage for a short-term rental. I've hired a manager that is experienced with short-term rentals, as she has two of her own. Mr. Riley has had issues in the past with his other neighbors on the other side of him. He called the police twice in February and August of 2019. Mr. Riley put orange cones out in front of his house to keep people from parking there. The police told him it's a public street, and he could not put the cones out as it was first come, first served on parking. Mr. Riley then put an eight-foot fence between him and his neighbor. Mr. Riley wanted to buy my house when he knew my mom could no longer live there alone. My property is a corner lot and has parking for probably six to eight cars. Mr. Riley also stated that the Airbnbs are making thousands of dollars, and the constant coming and going are causing him distress. I would like to point out that my Airbnb has only been rented four times. He has written so many dramatic letters, and he is obviously unhappy. But as stated before, this is not the first time he has been unhappy with his neighbors. I have managed a lot of places like Tend Depot and dental offices. I have trained many bartenders, waitstaff, and dental assistants. I have managed my own business for the last 14 years on Adams Avenue. One thing I have learned is that you cannot make an unhappy person happy, no matter what you do. You cannot control your neighbors. I have lived in my Z House for 40 years. The house right next to me used to be a long-term rental for years. One renter poured gas in the hot tub and lit it on fire, caught my tree on fire, and luckily the fireman woke me up. The same house now is rented by a man that I jokingly call Pigpen. He is on the corner of Z and Spruce Street. He owns the house. He has trash, old tires, metal boats all over his yard. The side and backyard are piled three feet with junk. He has flags hanging from his house that say F, but it says it Biden. I would be ecstatic, ecstatic if it was a short-term rental. But then again, you can't control your neighbors. When we took this before the planning commission to have it approved, Ann Morrison said that she drove by and Bill just happened to be outside, so she stopped and talked to him. She was on the planning commission with Bill when he was on it. Should she have recused herself? I know the county commissioners have to recuse themselves if they gather information like that. We've also seen Ann driving around my property and pointing at my garage recently on October 9th. Why is she so invested in this? I would like this to be a fair and unbiased hearing. Bill told us he would make sure that this did not get approved. Is that how we do things in the grand? Mr. Feely also stated that one person did not want it, and that was enough for him.
Okay, we're at our limit. Thank you, Ms. Rose. Do we have anybody else online or otherwise to provide any testimony? If not, Ms. Riley, I think the rules of this hearing do provide for some rebuttal. If you wish, if you do, and it appears you do, please hold this to a three-minute time limit, please.
Okay, and that's what's wrong with this process. And this is why nobody else is ever going to come forward, because this has been a continual effort to put me on trial and make this an issue of my character and how, you know, bad guy I am. And basically, 90% of what you said isn't true. The only thing that I will address is that the application was, went in on August 12th. That's the time to have on the letter. Okay, that's the stamp on the application, August 12th. Dustin did come over and speak with me on August 18th, like he said. That's a week after the application was submitted, even though what it says on the cover letter is he talked to all the neighbors. What he didn't say to me was that they put in an application for a second Airbnb. We talked about him painting the garage and doing all kinds of stuff. Yeah, it was a friendly discussion. I was prepared to deal with two Airbnbs and trying to figure out how to keep people from looking at my windows. The next day, when the postcard came, which was the 19th, then I found out they had an R. Then they, I found out they were trying to do a third, second for this lot, Airbnb. Okay? The rest of this stuff, I'm not even going to go there because for me to do that feeds into this thing that we're really not talking about Airbnbs here, you know? We're talking about what a cruddy guy I am and how I should be prosecuted for my numerous offenses. Bye.
Thank you. Okay, I think that we are ready for some council discussion at this point, unless we have yet another. You know, I think I'm going to allow this, but we really have gotten out of order.
Oh.
On.
I also wanted to respond. I just, my name is Ann Morrison. I am on the planning commission, and I just wanted to respond briefly to Ms. Rose. I wanted to let you know that I have never been on the planning commission with Mr. Riley. I don't know when he left, but he was not on the commission when I started. So I don't have that contact with him that she suggested, and I would like the council to know that.
Okay, good clarification, thank you. Okay, I think we need to move on at this point and entertain some council discussion about the issue.
Mr. Lur, you had one thing to keep in mind is you move forward. There's been a lot of comment, public comments made. The matter before you is whether or not to uphold, uphold the decision of the planning commission or to overturn it. And if you uphold their decision, you would essentially be adopting their findings and facts. And if you have any that you would like to add, you would do that. To overturn their decision, you would also have to, based on the record and the testimony that you've heard, identify findings of facts that address the two issues, which are, one, does it or doesn't it have the impacts on the abutting property? And does it or doesn't it have the impacts on the neighborhood? So there's been a lot of he said, she said stuff, which really doesn't go to the issue at hand, which is, does it or doesn't it meet the criteria as set forth in the Land Development Code?
That's a very useful clarification. One of my concerns here is that it does sound like this is one of those neighborhood issues that has resulted in a lot of divisiveness personalities. I always hate to see that. But I think we're very well advised here to keep our focus on the specific issue at hand and how we want to proceed with that. So that said, let's proceed with some discussion here, if there is any.
Well, I'll go.
Okay, please.
I really dislike the, how squishy it is, the subjective nature of this. So I'm trying hard to annotate with as much concreteness as I can. And I'm looking at adverse effects on a neighborhood and adverse effects on a neighbor. Those, those seem to be the two clear points. I, I am not convinced that there's an adverse effect on the neighborhood. I don't think that signature sheet reflects that at all. So by any, insofar as we can get an objective standard, I, I don't think we have it there. So set that aside. So adverse effects on the neighbor, and man, is this subjective. It talks about privacy. Privacy gets you even more subjective. I, I, I think that's almost difficult to unpack or impossible. It talks about safety. I don't see safety being an issue here. I, if there were evidence of numerous calls to the police in the area, you know, we've called the cops 15 times on this Airbnb, but it actually seems to be as safe or perhaps more safe because these renters, temporary though they are, are vetted through the Airbnb system. So the idea that these are, quote, "unsupervised hotels," I don't find that very convincing. Nor do I find strangers next door to be an inherently dangerous situation. A lot of people in the grand have strangers next door. I live across the street from the Observer Apartments. I have so many strangers next door. And that, I can't do anything about that, right? So, and I don't think this is a, I don't go for the slippery slope argument of handing the city over to Airbnb. I think that's a little bit hyperbolic. I, I can understand how one might feel that way if you didn't want it, but I don't think that's objectively true. So I personally don't see a problem for the neighborhood, and I'm not seeing enough from an individual neighbor that would cause me to uphold this. And I think I'll stop there.
Yeah, I'm inclined to agree. The only thing about privacy that I was a little concerned about, if you look at the photos that were provided, you can see that very clearly, a person could be looking from the upper story, the deck, for instance, and very easily see over his fence into his property and windows. Now, again, we probably, most of us have situations where that could occur. So I, I don't know that, how persuasive that is, but it does appear to be something that could happen for whatever that's worth.
So along those lines, then, if that is the sole issue, do you, are you willing to approve this if you get rid of the window that overlooks that?
Well, I don't know that we're really looking to make that kind of a decision.
Well, that's an option that we have is.
I suppose we could include some conditions. Yeah, Robert is right, shaking his head affirmatively, so I guess that's something we could consider.
I mean, because I, I hear Nicole's points, which are, this is really, really subjective. And if we want to, you know, if at some point we want to establish some standard that says, hey, you have X number of Airbnbs within a certain radius, and that's it, that's fine. We don't have that standard. And I, I tend to agree with Nicole's same thoughts. I don't think this is adversely affecting the neighborhood. In fact, I think we're seeing quite a bit of evidence of the contrary. The neighbor, I don't know how I would feel. But I think this also comes down to, should it be allowed and is it allowed under our, under our ordinances? And, you know, and, and where is that subjective standard? It's one of the reasons that we've allowed a moratorium on this, is to revisit that. This is an application that was received prior to that.
Right.
And, and I think, you know, I keep coming back to that. I, I'm, this is a really, really subjective standard. I'm not sure that you can, you can hold to that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I have a feeling, I'm, I'm agreeing with both Nicole and Dave on this issue. I have a neighbor that overlooks my backyard. I mean, it's just one of those things that happens, and I can't have a, I don't, and I can't have them not have a window there because half their house is there overlooking my neighborhood, my backyard.
Yeah, I, I, I understand all the points, and I don't know that I'm even comfortable with attaching a condition, as was suggested. That seems a little over.
It does seem, I mean, it's a nice thought. It would be nice if they'd be willing to do that on their own, but I don't see that we can ask them to do that.
And I say that more as a thought experiment than anything else, not necessarily proposing that. But again, kind of the same thought. It, my neighbor, you know, we've got an empty lot next to us. If somebody wanted to build a home there, I don't know, Mike, is there some standard of, you know, that we have here for neighboring property to say, I don't want that home there because I'm worried about my privacy, you know? Or, or is this a standard only that we have set for, for short-term rentals?
Well, it's not a standard that's set for short-term rentals. So, but if, if you have a neighboring property and, and your neighbor wants to build a short-term rental there, they could. And through the process, if, if you have a concern about folks coming and going daily and what impact that might be, not knowing how many people that is, are they allowed people, not allowed people? And you want to have the planning commission, you know, address that impact, the planning commission or yourselves in this case, you could impose a requirement, require a, a fence be constructed to at least try to mitigate potential impacts that, that may occur.
Is that the same for a privately-owned, single-family home?
It is not the same because a privately, single-family, a, a single-family home is permitted outright, and there are no requirements.
And that's, and that's my point here, is that if privacy, again, privacy is our standard. Somebody wants to build a home that's three stories tall and could look down into my window, that's an outright permitted thing? I, I don't see how we can possibly, I, I, I worry about. that's an outright permitted thing, I don't see how we can possibly, I worry about that double standard.
Right. Justin, do you have any thoughts on this?
It's all been pretty hit. I'm in agreeance with Dave and Nicole down there, you know. The bad part is, they need to fix the rules, and that's why we put the moratorium in. We need to have a little more clearer, you know, standards on how to judge these things, and leaving it open like this is not good for anybody.
John, anything?
No, I'd like to go up with questions.
Okay. In that case, I'm going to close the public hearing and entertain a motion for consideration.
I move that the findings of fact and conclusions set forth in the draft decision order be amended and that the planning commission decision be reversed, resulting in the conditional use permit being approved.
Second.
We have a move and a second. Any other quick discussion or comment from the council? Okay, if not, all those in favor of the motion, that is to deny the appeal, wait a minute. That would be the other way around.
Grant the appeal.
To grant the appeal, correct. I'm getting, please say aye. Anybody opposed?
We've got one abstention.
We have one abstention, so the motion passes 6-0. Appreciate people's interest. This is one of those tough ones and one where I hate to see it turned into a neighborhood division, but appreciate everybody's participation and the council's work and the planning commission.
Thank you.
Okay, Steve, back to you.
All right. Four items, new business. First one is to consider awarding a bid for sanitary sewer rehabilitation. That's Mr. Carpenter.
Mr. Mayor and councilors, so the action form you have in front of you right now is asking you to consider awarding the contract for the project 2223 sanitary sewer rehab. This again is one of the projects where we do the cast-in-place pipe. That's where the contractor will insert a sock or a, you know, basically a resin tube. Sometimes they use a ultraviolet one. They'll cure it in place. We don't have to do any excavation, so it's a lot cheaper. We get to keep our roads in the standard disrepair they're in it right now, not add to it. And for this process, we actually got five qualified bids, which is kind of odd for us lately on these bids. We usually haven't been seeing those. As you'll see, the apparent low is planned and engineering construction. They've been to town many times. They generally work well with the public. We haven't had any problems with them. The separation between the lowest two bidders was actually only $3,500 on a, you know, half a million dollar project. That's pretty competitive, so we would recommend that we award to the apparent low bidder, so be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Kyle? I like these projects because there's no impact on the road.
Exactly.
And we've been doing this for a number of years. I mean, are we getting to a point where, you know, a lot of the sewer lines have been rehabilitated and might not need to be touched again for a while, or?
So we've been doing it for 30 years. On average, we do about a mile a year, so some years you're, you know, this year we only did about 60% of a mile. Last year, we did a little more. So we have a total of 85 miles of underground sanitary sewer. So we're, you know, 35% of the way there.
Yeah. Okay. Dave, did you have a question? Okay. No questions for Kyle? Thank you.
I move.
Oh, wait, wait. Any public comments on this? I'd like to make sure we get that piece in there.
It's a good idea.
Council comments? Look, I know you want the gavel, but I've got it for the time being. Sorry, I had to say it.
That's fine by me. Believe me.
Now we can entertain a motion.
All right. I move that we award the 2022-2023 sanitary sewer rehabilitation project to Planned and Engineered Construction Incorporated in the amount of $488,850, as shown in the bid summary, and further that City Manager Stroke be authorized to execute the contract documents for the bid for the project.
Second. Second? All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. Chief Cornford, this is, wait a sec, where am I?
You want me to handle this one?
I deserve that.
7B, I believe, there.
Yeah, I'm looking, I don't, hold on. I don't have a 7B.
Thank you for your time.
That's what it is. I don't have a 7B in mind. So consider authorizing the city manager to finalize and sign a transport agreement between Lifeflight and Le Grand Fire Department. And honestly, I did not have this one in my, ooh, I deserved that one too, didn't I?
It's a rough crowd.
Take it over, Chief.
I'll give you a little background. We are asking for a contract between Lifeflight and the city fire department. Currently, we do, in a typical year, we do about 160 to 180 transfers back and forth between the hospital and the airport. With the construction of the hospital, we're looking at probably 400 this year and possibly next year. What this contract would do would allow us a little more flexibility in the way that we do those transports. Currently, we have to send two crew members in the ambulance. When they get back, they have to write a patient care report, which takes a significant amount of time. Then we bill the patient for the transfer. This contract would allow us to essentially lease our ambulance and a driver to Lifeflight, so we'd have to just send one person. What that impact is, if we have a five-person crew like Dusty talked about earlier, we still maintain four at the station for other responses. We could also possibly use some of our casual EMTs that are part-time employees to do those if we got enough lead time. So then Lifeflight would pay us a set amount per transport with, including mileage, and my best calculations, which is difficult because of insurance pay rates and those types of things, I think we're going to come out really close to the same amount of revenue from this, but we're going to gain, we're going to gain a lot more flexibility in our response. We will also save a significant amount of overtime from calling people back in because we're, so, yeah, we recommend this. You have any questions?
Questions from Chief on this? Sounds like a pretty good win-win situation, would you say?
Yeah, we're still working on one little piece of language, so we've asked that we be able to finalize that and have the city manager sign.
Okay, good. Any questions for Chief?
Definitely in support of it.
Okay. Any public comment on this? Council discussion? A motion?
I move that the city manager be authorized to finalize and sign the agreement between the Lifeflight and the City of Le Grand Fire Department as presented.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, and I'm not blaming anybody, but that one was in our packet, so.
We're blaming people.
Yeah. I like Nicole's idea of phasing me.
It's my fault.
It is? Okay, I blame him, Robert. Kyle, you have some good news for us.
Back again.
Yeah, you are. This is considering establishing a prioritized AARP roadway project list. Are you going to get to do all 11 and 12 that we had originally?
I believe so. So this action form is a result of our previous meeting back in October, where it was established that 2,774,000 approximately of the ARPA dollars would be placed into the roads, and we would use them to fund the, not really the prioritized list, but the list of streets that was come up with through the process, through the council, through public input. And what staff did was, we took those roads and we put them into kind of the order in which we would complete them based on budget year. So we took advantage of different things like we'll complete, like work at the same time. What that means is like we put all the grind and inlay projects in one budget year, because in-house, we don't do roadway grinding, so we would have a contractor come in, so instead of paying multiple mulpies, we'll just hit them all at once. So moving forward, we have them placed all in order, so all adjustments and all obligations will be made at the latest during the 2425 budget year, which would meet the requirements of the ARPA funds. And included in your packet is the actual prioritized list that was developed by staff, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Kyle, the only question I have is 6th Street. You know, that would have to be done in the next fiscal year, right, which is July 1?
Correct.
So I would hope that you would have it done July, I mean, and August, because the kids come back to school then, September, so you'd almost have to do it then, so I would hope it'd be first one you could do in that fiscal year and get it done.
Yeah, and I think, and part of this process is, is we're, each one of these streets projects will actually go through kind of a design process and look at those timings. So being in the 2324 budget year, I'm going to say the 5th of July, because generally the 1st to the 4th, there's really not much that happens from the standpoint of major projects, but that could be the one that we jump on right off the 5th of July and get it done. But we do, I agree with you, we do need to tend to make those kind of judgments, so we're at least impact possible.
So Kyle, I'm looking at the first six. You get those done this fiscal year?
That's the plan. So number 16th Street, we've already begun the process on 16th Street. We have done an overlay on the major portion of it to create a much better driving surface. We still have some objectives to complete on 16th Street. We want to go in and complete some spot repairs and then do a chip seal over the entire roadway to create a surface over the whole roadway, seal off any joints, make sure we're getting a lot of structure there. The other ones, a lot of those grind and inlays, we're likely going to be subbing out some of that work, so this is not work that we're necessarily going to be taking all this on in department. We're going to be spreading the wealth out.
I'm just wondering about the season. I mean, first snowfall was last night.
So, yeah.
Calling for a snowy winter. I can imagine some of this might not really kick in until March, April, May, next year.
Correct.
Okay.
And, you know, the wonderful way about how Robert has budgeted these funds, if we're completing a project, even though we've said this is our budget year, the funds are budgeted throughout the year, so projects can slowly move through as we go forward.
Okay.
Kyle, I have a question too. On 16th Street, you were talking about the chip seal. Is that something that would cover curb to curb, so to speak, cover those kind of wide shoulders that exist there?
Yeah, that's the intention. The intention is to go in, if you'll notice, maybe as you're heading down in front of wildflower or maybe a little north, there's still some, you know, pretty rough areas along the center line, so we want to go in, we want to cut those out, we want to do some spot repairs. And then that chip seal will go, you know, from your statement, basically curb to curb to cover that whole paved area and create a nice surface so that water runoff is good and we're not getting freeze-thaw cycles and everything.
I was bringing it up basically as a safety concern, because driving that street, I've noticed a lot of pedestrians tend to walk out on the paved surface, which is not real why, and I think we had a hit and run.
We had a, somebody was killed there.
That's what I was thinking.
We certainly did, and actually, we extended, or we widened the roadway from its original paved surface three feet on each side in that section that we have repaved. So what you're seeing today is even wider than when that accident occurred.
Yes, and thank you.
All right, any other questions for Kyle? You're good? Public comment? Yes, please, Roxy.
I'll do this after I'm out. I asked Kyle this question, and he wasn't sure. I live on Division Street, which is on your list. We have a speed bump, and that's the only method of controlling speed on that street, and it isn't, it's not a good method, but it's the only method. We have no crosswalks. Mailboxes are on the opposite side of the street for those living on the north side. So my question is, when these roads are replaced, will the speed bump, depending on what has to be done to the roadway, be removed, or is it the intention to repair or replace the streets as they stand? And I'm not sure where that would come in, in the design process, or if it would be coming before the Safety and Road Commission, so.
Parking and traffic safety.
Yeah, yeah.
I think Kyle's the best one to answer that one.
He couldn't answer it. That's why I'm here.
What's going to happen on 12? Oh, you've had time.
Okay.
So in answer to Roxy's question, kind of what I've been thinking about as I've been sitting there, I took a look. Division is actually in the last budget year, and 12th Street's in the first budget year. So in our earlier conversations on 12th Street, there has been a lot of discussion on the speed bump. There has never been much testimony on anybody who likes the speed bump or wants to keep it, so we did a little bit of internal research. There's, to this point, nothing been found that has been a registered decision to keep that speed bump in place, so likely the method we would take is first approaching the Parking Traffic Safety Commission to see if their thoughts are on it, if they're still in favor of removing the speed bump. We'd probably do some local outreach around the speed bump, see what the neighborhood's favor for or against is, and then move forward with or without it based on some of those outcomes.
Same with Division.
I would think, depending on how the outcome of 12th Street goes, if it's a good process or we'll refine it as we go through that, if we find, you know, we'll have two years to see whether or not that process was worthwhile or not.
Okay. That court for you?
Yes.
Okay. Any other public comments on roads? Council discussion? A motion?
I think it's great.
I move that the proposed prioritized list of roadway projects be approved for funding with the city's ARPA allocation.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. I know this has Chief Bell's name on it, but I thought I would kick it off, so, but Chief, if you want to come to the podium. Last council meeting, I brought up the concerns about Measure 110 and its decriminalization of illicit drugs of all kinds, and some of the problems that it's raising. Council directed me to draft a letter, which I did, in a more or less aggressive state of mind. I did run it by Chief Bell and City Manager Stroke. Both of them were okay with it, but I have to admit that after reading it again, there was a little strong language in there. So we received a revised, a different draft of the letter from Counselor Gleb, which I wholeheartedly approve, but I didn't want to take too much thunder away from Chief Bell on this one, and if you, whatever you have to say.
I hope I don't, Mr. Mayor, I hope I don't disappoint. I don't have a whole lot of thunder to give you on this one, but I really, I think that the letter speaks on its own. I offered some information last session in October. If you have any questions about that information, I know Counselor Gleb asked me before the session began tonight about some data that we have locally. I'm happy to share that if you're interested.
I guess, I guess, all right, and so let's back up a second. You're talking about the letter that Dave sent afterwards, which I believe includes the key elements minus the tone that we had in our first step.
I agree.
Okay. Do you think the letter would be strengthened with some more statistics, if you have them?
I don't know that I would say that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I just, I know that Counselor Gleb had some questions about, you know, what are we seeing here locally in terms of calls for service, you know, from 2020, and then, you know, the implementation of Ballot Measure 110 was in February of 2021, and what did we see for police and 911-related calls for service in 2021, and then again, so far through this calendar year? And then I think more specifically, that is most certainly easily contributable data is the overdose calls for service that we have seen, you know, we experienced in 2020, and then what we experienced in calendar year 2021, and what we have experienced so far through this calendar year.
Well, I personally think that having some of that data might have great impact to enhance the letter.
Well, I think we have some, there's one recommendation I was going to make. My original letter is addressed to the governor, the gubernatorial candidates, Representative Levy, and Senator Hansel. Since we're so close to the election, my suggestion would be, if we can work some of this data into Dave's letter, and then address it to outgoing Governor Brown and incoming and then address it to outgoing Governor Brown and incoming Governor. Keep the two representatives in there. That would give us some time to add the data to it. And you'll see that my original letter included all of our signatures. So that would give staff time to draft the letter, collect the signatures and get it out, plus some time for Chief Bell to put together some data and add it as appropriate.
I think you said you had some data.
I've got your data.
Mind sharing that?
I've got your data tonight.
Okay, let's hear it.
Sharing that with the council?
Certainly. So let me share with you first that these are, these numbers are related to total calls for service to the LeGrand Police Department. So not EMS or anything like that. So in calendar year 2020, we had a total of 11,268 calls for service. And let me remind you that Ballot Measure 110 went into effect February 1st of 2021. That calendar year, 2021, our calls for service went up to 11,931. That's a 5.6% increase over the previous calendar year. And then this year, this is only through the end of September 2022. We have experienced 12,485 calls for service. This is a 9.8% increase in calls for service over calendar year 2020. So we have experienced nearly 10% increase in our calls for service. You know, if you run the math, to some, it might not seem like a huge number. But keep in mind, the number of resources that we have to respond to those calls for service has not changed. And in calendar year 2020, we were busy. Our staff are called a call and the calls, the complexity related to, you know, what we're experiencing in, you know, when we have so many calls that have an attribute of drug abuse, and we don't have the tools that we had, you know, prior to Ballot Measure 110 to apply some type of a solution to whatever issue that is causing in our community. It requires a lot more time and effort on our part to try to mitigate the issue. So that was just police. But in our 911 center, mind you, because any calls that our police deal with, those are coming through the 911 center. But this then captures other law enforcement calls for service. And also, what I've given you, these are not total 911 calls for service. This is only for law enforcement. So in Union County, we're talking LeGrand Police Department, Union County Sheriff's Office, and also all of our EMS. So in 2020, 25,355 calls for service. In 2021, that increased to 27,028 calls for service. That's a 6.2% increase over the previous calendar year. And so far through September of 2022, we are looking at 27,110 calls for service. So over calendar year 2020, a 6.5% increase in calls for service into the 911 center. And again, make sure that I'm clear that that's LeGrand Police, Union County Sheriff's Office, and EMS. So it would be not only LeGrand Fire's ambulance, but all of our other, our outlying EMS also. Yes, sir.
Chief, of those 25,000 calls, whatever that number is, can you tell me how many are drug-related?
No, I can't. That's one of the problems with the data and post Ballot Measure 110. We don't track that because it's not a crime. So what I can tell you is that we go to domestic violence-related calls for service, or we go to a call for service in our community that maybe the call comes in as a disorderly conduct situation. What we're experiencing is oftentimes there's a connection with drugs, but that's not categorized as a drug-related call for service any longer because that's not a criminal activity that we track. I know, that's frustrating. I think that the data that I'm going to share with you now helps a little bit answer the question that we're getting at with, can we break that out specifically to drugs? This is overdose-related calls for service. I shared some information with you a number of months ago, but that has changed because this is ongoing and evolving. Let me preface this by sharing that the numbers that I'm going to give you are strictly overdose-related calls for service that come in through our 911 center. So if someone in our community is experiencing overdose or they have someone in their, you know, home or with them that is experiencing overdose, and they choose to call 911. So irregardless if then that becomes law enforcement first response or EMS, oftentimes both, these are just the calls for service that come in through 911. This does not include persons who may be experiencing overdose that present at our emergency department at Grand Run Hospital without any triggering of the 911 system. This does not include the numbers or data where people may respond to public health on their own without, you know, any emergency response triggering, or self-care through Narcan treatment or something like that. So, and if you have, I think I've cleared that up pretty well. But here's the numbers. Calendar year 2020, we had 10 calls for service into our 911 center related to overdose. Calendar year 2021, that increased to 45. So that is a 350% increase in calls for service related to overdose. In the city of LeGrand, because I shared with you, that's coming into the 911 center. So that could be jurisdictionally, that could be in Union. And so it's, you know, not just LeGrand Police Department or LeGrand Fire. They oftentimes are going all over the county. But in the city of LeGrand, of those 45, 33 were in the city of LeGrand. Calendar year 2022, so far through the end of September, and I regret to tell you that I'm very well aware of some that we've had just recently. They're not in this data. We have experienced 46. If this trajectory holds true, understand this math is not solid because it could change between now and the end of the calendar year. We're on track to see 61-ish overdoses this year. So that is a 510% increase in overdoses over calendar year 2020. That data is pretty meaningful, I think, Counselor Bozo, to the question that you asked me.
I think that's, those statistics alone should get in this letter.
I do too.
The overdose numbers that we have up to date. I think, you know, it's always hard, it's always hard to make a cause and effect relationship. But it doesn't hurt to include numbers that express a significant and concerning pattern. So.
I'll share with you as well that I, you know, I communicate regularly with our partners at Grand Run Hospital and with public health. And, you know, it's not as easy to obtain some of that data due to HIPAA things. But I can, I can share with you, not speaking on their behalf by any measure, but what I am seeing through our data sources is in keeping with what they're seeing. So you don't get the total picture here because there's some things that are happening that don't come through the 911 center, but it's on par with.
Yeah, and even that kind of, you know, qualifying statement, if that can be, if we can work that into the letter as well, that would be good.
I just want to say that I like the letter. I would think putting the statistics in is great. And I appreciate Dave's rewrite a little bit. Just because of, like, in the world of professional writing, there's just no place for the exclamation point.
Oh, come on!
I know, I know. You can't use them. And so as much as I really do appreciate what you put together, I just think this, this comes off with a little more.
Yes, it does.
You know, you didn't say anything wrong. I just think that we see more.
Yeah, we're toning back, yeah, toning back.
I think it's toning back. I think it's toning up.
Okay, that's good, yes.
So I'm happy to send this.
I'd be open for edits or rewrites. I wrote this pretty quickly. I just was trying to get it in before.
You know, I think.
So if somebody wants to edit this and polish it a little bit, I'm sure that's possible.
I think the only thing we really want to make sure that happens is that we get the statistics in and maybe some qualifying statements about not being able to report data from other agencies or organizations that are dealing with the same issue. But anecdotally, we're hearing that they're experiencing the same types of trends. Before, I'm gonna, before we move on to council discussion, thank you, Chief, for that. Does anybody want to comment on this?
Anecdotally, since Measure 110 was implemented, I have personally given more Narcan to patients in that amount of time than all the previous years combined. We've also had more people younger than me die and continually go on people that used to, you know, young people die in traumatic ways usually. And now it seems to be more of a common overdose. So doing something about it or trying to do something about it is very important because it unfortunately is affecting a lot of people, especially all across the state of Oregon. And we have to change our trajectory. Thank you.
Thank you, Dusty.
Mayor, you know, it might be nice is we could get Dusty to lay that out with, you know, how long you've been a firefighter? And we can include within the body of a letter a quote from one of our firefighters that speaks directly to that. I think that would be a really strong reinforcement of the message. I agree with including the overdose stuff. I wouldn't add in the calls for service stuff because that's really just additional noise. And, you know, we can go ahead and make some minor tweaks, but stay with the thing that Dave put together.
Would you do that for us, Dusty?
Yeah, I can do that. You know, I started March of 2015.
Okay.
And then another thing I was going to add was that the amount of Narcan we're having to give per patient has increased significantly.
That's what I'm hearing.
Everybody has, you know, four milligrams of Narcan that they give at home. Sometimes they're giving three or four doses prior to us getting there. And then we're giving our own doses of upwards of eight milligrams per patient. So, you know, 16 to 20 is not uncommon with patients.
They build up an immunity to the effects of.
So, well, some of the stuff is just so potent anymore.
Dusty will run us a couple sentences by you to make sure we got it right.
So I think the motion should change a little bit in the sense of approving that we send a letter with amendments. Does that sound reasonable?
That works, okay. Can I just make sure of one thing? So I'm aware of two episodes dealing with children in schools. And I don't know if there's others, but I, I know one, of one with marijuana gummies being shared and then the one that we had this last week.
Right.
So I just wanted to make sure I was accurate on that. Those both came from teachers that I know in the community, but.
And I had, I had endeavored to make this a one-page letter, but I think if we put more information in there, it should be two pages. And because, I mean, when you, when, the signatures alone take up a lot of space. And I think the, I think Dave's letter, once it gets formatted appropriately and we add a quote from Dusty and some more statistics, I like the comment about the incidences with grade school kids. I think those need to be in here. And then we can, and then we can put it together and have councilors sign it post Tuesday next week or after Tuesday next week.
So what I would suggest, Mayor, would be the motion would just simply say, "I move that the revised letter from the city of LeGrand regarding Measure 110 be approved and signed by the mayor and councilors as discussed."
So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
That just made it easy. I don't want to drag this out. Thank you, Robert. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
The only last question is who's going to do the drafting and then?
I'll make sure it's finalized.
Okay. That concludes regular session. County Commissioner Scarfo.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and councilors. And I just want to applaud you on that letter. I did not get to read it, but Measure 110 was not one of my favorite measures that was passed. I know that 40% of the people in Union County did vote for it. I believe if we put that back on the ballot, we would see that number be extremely less. A lot of people thought it was to treatment and not to.
Decriminalization.
I didn't want to. Decriminalization of narcotics. So thank you very much for that letter. I'm still trying to get it back on the ballot. But like the election that's coming up, I'm trying so. A lot of people just say, gotta wait for the election, two out of the three. Governor candidates are looking to repeal it. So we're still waiting for the election to happen to see what happens there. With the election, I do have some updates. Like I said, everything's kind of paused right now because of the election. But from the clerk's office, I have some numbers for us. We have in right now of ballots, oh, I don't want to mess up her language, accepted. We're around 27.93% of ballots in. You may think that's a low number, but we are on par that we, I'm sorry, the same percentage we were same time during the 2020 election.
Oh, okay.
And the 2020 election, we had 79.23% actually vote. So there's a lot of people that like to put their ballots in late, so.
This is county-wide?
County-wide, yes. I do, I did some math and citywide, 2,128 people in the city proper, LeGrand City proper have voted as of yesterday. The ones today who have not been counted.
What percentage is that? Do you know, Matt?
I did as much math as I could here. I don't know the registered voters in the city of LeGrand. I don't have that number. But I do know that total eligible voters in Union County is 19,228. So I could get that number for them. Trust me, there's a lot of data right now, and I wish I, I like kind of crunching these numbers too. And I tried to get, I didn't anticipate that question, Gary, but I should have had that. I apologize. The other thing too is informational only. There are a few measures that are on the ballot, kind of like you guys had in your public hearing. The yes for a no. I really urge everybody to read the measures and vote accordingly. If you do have any questions, please call the clerk's office or call our office. We'll send you over to the clerk, 963-1001, just to make sure. Our number one, there's a lot of questions being, coming in about a certain measure on the ballot, kind of a no for a yes. So I just urge everybody to really read the measures really well to make sure you're not voting for something you don't want or voting for something you do want. I could go, I'll just leave that as it is. Please, if there's any questions on the ballot, please call the clerk's office. Oh, we did accept the, in our commission meeting this morning, we did accept the LeGrand master plan. I wanted to thank, I'm sorry, Mr. Spencer's master plan. I want to thank him for all the hard work and his committee does for that. It was extensive and it's ongoing, and I really wanted to appreciate that and acknowledge him during this meeting. Was that good, Stu? Okay, all right. Everything update on Mira, Mira logging, I'm sorry, the thinning project has halted because of soft grounds. We're waiting for the grounds to stiffen up, so there's no more damage to the area. We just ask people to maybe stay out of the area in case of harm or getting locked in. But we will be on the, that will commence as soon as the ground, or the weather is permitting. And if there's any other questions, I would entertain them.
Any questions for Commissioner Scarfo?
If anyone needs any of the codes to any of the gates to get out of Mira, just let me know.
I, I just didn't want anyone to be locked in again.
That's why you have to walk to cell reception.
I'm sorry.
Why is cell reception up there? It's probably a good thing.
There's a car in there, who blocks it?
I think we're good, Matt, thank you.
Okay, that's all I got. Thank you very much.
Staff comments? City manager comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to the council. I think what Commissioner Scarfo was alluding to on some of the ballot measures is it's asking a yes or no on whether or not to impose moratorium on the psychedelic mushroom element. So a voted yes would impose the ban. A voted no would not. And so that's, that one is, I know that there's been some confusion about, where some people see a yes, they look at it and go, oh, no, I'm against that, not realizing that a yes vote is what they should have done and vice versa. So that, I think, the confusion that he was, may have been alluding to. I did want to comment on the public comment from the fire department. And I share the frustration. from the fire department, and I share the frustration in the call volume and the challenges of attracting and retaining folks. But there are a couple things I feel compelled to say. First and foremost, the decision as to whether or not you're required to be vaccinated did not rest with the city or this council. And I think it's a bit disingenuous to imply that it does. That was a state mandate that we were required to impose. The assertion that the fire department is not receiving new equipment, I think is a little bit misleading as well. We've instituted an ambulance re-box replacement program, and yes, we've been very successful in getting apparatus replaced with grants, which means we don't have to use general fund dollars to do that. To imply that we would not be replacing apparatus unless we got grants, I don't think is accurate. And by the way, I think you're in a fairly new building. So we have invested in equipment at the fire department, and across all departments we could do better, but I was just a little disappointed that it appeared to imply that the council has not supported, that the city has not supported the department. Yeah, I just felt compelled to share that. And, you know, we're both passionate about the issue in wanting to do the right thing and do the best. So that we, I think we're in absolute agreement on. Last thing I wanted to touch on was the issue of the fair support funding. We had a work session, and we talked about that, and I met with Commissioner Scarfo this afternoon, and it's my intent to put together a letter on behalf of the city indicating $250,000 worth of financial support as leverage for $1 million from the state. And so I'll go ahead and complete that, and then when we get the final numbers from A and P, we'll share those, and we'll talk in a little bit more detail about timing of funding and what that would look like. And we'll touch on this on the retreat as well. But at this point, my intent would be to propose in the budget $119,000 of TRT funds of support for the fairgrounds, and that would be, we would be addressing the waiver of fees to get us to that minimum of $250,000. What that translates to for ARPA dollars is I think Kyle will be able to do one or two more street projects. He's only got 12 on the list, but we should be able to cover all 12 of those, may add one to it.
Can I just clarify, then, that statement of financial support can include the TRT as well as the waiver of funds?
Yeah, my intent would be that it would be both.
Thank you.
Because I don't think we can get there with the waiver piece. I think that, I don't think we waive all of the fees. But again, my intent would be to get us to somewhere in that 250 to 275 of total real financial support.
Is that something that we should vote on?
We can bring it back to you for a specific vote on it.
It just seems like we should have, have a formal decision on it.
Sure. Yeah, the main thing is, the immediacy piece is the letter of support indicating that we're going to provide essentially $250,000 of support to leverage that $1 million. That's the main thing, and we'll bring something back as a formal action on the waiver of the fees.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
John?
I'm good.
Dave? Nicole? Gary?
Nothing. Oh, yes, we had a very successful downtown Halloween trick-or-treat. It was packed, absolutely packed. Lots of darling costumes, and Timothy and myself and Scott from the chamber did the judging of the contest. Those were, I even was bribed with, one child gave me a, I'll take, I'll give you all my candy.
Oh, man!
I said, I don't want your candy.
As long as it wasn't $50 worth, you're okay, Marion.
I didn't...
Hustler.
But it was great. It was a great event.
Good.
I think the city should be thanking Hall of Main Street, and everybody that participated, because that is a great deal for the kids. Makes it very safe, you know. I think it's a great thing, and I think we need to continue it every year.
We will be continuing it. I'm sure there were more kids this year. I know our car club brought down, I think we had candy for 1,500, and they ran out.
Wow!
Oh, yeah.
There was a lot of kids.
That's cool.
A lot of businesses, we had, I think, over 30-some outside of the downtown area come down and participate.
I don't think I saw anybody in the neighborhood that night. I think most of them went down and took advantage of the concentrated booty.
I mean, it was hard to get around.
Yeah. Good, thank you, Marion. Justin, anything?
I'm good. I just wanted to thank you.
Okay, I got several things, really quick. Counselor Howard and I, and my wife, and Wally Waller showed up at Jerry's house a few weeks back and cleaned the windows. She was very, very appreciative of us being there. I thought it was gonna take a long time. We were done in 45 minutes. She insisted on us just doing the front. So it worked, it was good fun.
How was the rest of her issue gone, Dave?
It didn't look bad, because the front of the house is where, that was directly across the street from the construction site, and it took the brunt of it. And you could see the dust that accumulated on the shutters and on the windows, and she was, she was a wonderful little, wonderful woman to stand out there and chat with, and we've got everything done.
Is the issue now mitigated? I mean...
The issue got mitigated.
Totally.
Yes. Well, at least at her house. And Wally was a lot of fun. He showed up. He's a kick to talk to. He's got a lot of energy. I expect to see him with his hands in some other things in the community pretty quickly. Trying to get him on the coalition. Yesterday, no, Monday, I met with a gentleman in this room, and I asked him, "When was the last time you had been in La Grande?" And without a wink, without a bit, a moment's hesitation, he said, "1942." Do the math, that's 80 years ago. This guy was clear as a bell, and we spent an hour and a half talking about his time when he lived here in La Grande, and that was such an honor to meet him. Met his daughter, he got a tour of Liberty Theater. He was interviewed by Bill, by Dick Mason, and there, and because he was a veteran in World War II, he served in the Pacific, South Pacific as a nose gunner in an airplane. Dick's gonna feature him as the Veterans Day person. So it was a real honor to have, to meet this guy. I liked him so much that he and I are gonna communicate by email. He lives in Florida. He grew up, he grew up in Elgin. His grandfather was a doctor in Elgin. His last name is McNorton. So if anybody knows anything about the McNorton family locally, I'd love to hear it, because this guy's just, it would be really cool. He didn't know that his grandfather had a brother, and he doesn't know what happened to his uncle. So, anyway, I could go on and on. I talked about you. He was a real joy. I emailed you a little while ago about the Oregon Mayor's Association wanting support for a budget package that they're requesting from the legislature for homelessness. If anybody would like me to do anything with this, the email says I should respond by Friday, November 4. And I would, I would, just, I could, I could just send an inquiry and see, just to give you an idea what they're asking for, La Grande would get, sit down on this one, $5,230,000 for homelessness.
523?
Yeah, $523,000.
Yes.
Every county, I mean, this is, this is, I think, a bit of a dream, because it's really expensive annually to deal with this, but La Grande would get $525,000. Emblor, Union, Island City would all get $50,000. That's a lot of change to put towards homelessness. Even if we got half of that, I think we could do, we could do a tremendous amount for homelessness in our community.
Mayor, are you asking for the council's permission to do a letter of support for the initiative that the Mayor's Association is putting forward?
If, yes, I am asking for that. If that's, do we need a vote on that?
I think just consensus that that's okay would be good.
Be good for that?
All good?
Okay. I'll put something together, and I'll get that out. The last thing I want to do is I want to respond a bit to recent editorials in the paper about the Urban Renewal District. I don't think I need to reiterate in a lot of detail about the good that the district has done for our Main Street and for the district itself. You know, we've got the Landing, the Local, we've got the Penninger Building, we've got Streetscape, we've got the Bowling Alley, we've got the marketplace across the street. Lots of money go into the Urban Renewal District on an annual basis. There's transparency throughout the process. The only time that we don't hear anything is when individual businesses are still in the planning phase, and they're talking with our Economic Development Director. And that's, I mean, it's not unusual for us to know not to know when there's a business interest in the community, because they want to protect that confidentiality. But there's transparency throughout the process. All of our meetings are open to the public. Our Urban Renewal Advisory Commission, which Roxy is on, those meetings are open. We have a, an open work session when we decide where the money should go. So there's nothing that we're holding back. The budget is publicly available. We have looked at the Urban Renewal Development Plan. The original one was revised, I don't remember when, but it's been revised at least once, maybe twice, and we follow that plan. Chief Bell would love to have money from Urban Renewal District to put in a new fire station, but it's not in the plan.
Excuse me. Police station.
Sorry, I'm looking at Chief Cornford, and I got, I got stuck that way, okay? Thank you. You know, and I have to be honest, I was, I was on the council in the late 90s when this concept was put before. I, and I think Gary might have been on there.
No.
No, but, but there was some conversation about a sunset date, and I think we were all sort of under the impression that it was a 20-year sunset. That's not the way the plan was finalized. The plan was finalized to include sunset based on indebtedness, and that's how much do we spend in the district. We haven't reached that yet, and we're very, very specific about what's available about that district and what indebtedness we have. You know, I even hate to say this, but there's nothing illegal going on within the context of our Urban Renewal District, our Urban Renewal Agency, or our Urban Renewal Advisory Commission. Nothing at all.
Mayor, by the way, you know, several years ago, we had somebody from the state come out and go over the urban...
Yep, yep.
...rebuild project with us, but just with the council. And so maybe we could ask somebody to come out and have an open meeting at someplace, and let those people raise those questions after the, after the first year.
Well, and that's, and John, that's right, because I think this is a very complicated program.
She was very good, the gal that came out.
Yes.
We're already planning on doing that again, and ironically, the last time that she was here, if memory serves, or maybe the time before when she talked about the sunset, the author of the letter that the mayor's alluding to, I believe that they were in the audience at that time, and I believe that issue and question came up.
Hard to get through some people.
So, you know, it's a complicated program. Honestly, I've been involved with it a long time, and I don't think I understand all the nuances of it. But there's, I, you know, I, I don't like when somebody accuses of me of this council doing something illegal, because I take that seriously. The eight years that I've been on this council as mayor, nothing illegal had happened within the context of the Urban Renewal District. Nothing. That's all I have to say. And unless there's any other comments, Robert?
Just to let John know that we do have her on tap to come back in the spring and provide some training for our...
And, Robert, do you remember her name?
Elaine Howard.
Elaine Howard? Yes. I know that I've listened, we had a session with her at least once, and I'm sure that you have tapped her for feedback on the plan.
She's kind of the Oregon expert.
Yep.
A lot of cities use her, and she's awesome.
Yep, she is. All right. With that, we're adjourned.